Yes, we can, I can say that once as we go through. So who made the motion that time?
It was Schmidt. I believe it was second by Beck.
Is that correct? Beck? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for clarifying. The second item we have are the minutes, the draft minutes of special meeting of March 25th, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Again.
So.
Moved by Schmidt. Oh, you want to say it, Mayor? Go ahead.
You got it. You got it.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Miller.
We have a motion and a second. Greg, do you want to call the roll?
Beck.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Hendricks. Oh, sorry. She's shaking her head yes. That's a yes. Okay. Uh, Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman.
Greg, would you do the roll?
Yes. Beck?
Yes.
Camprith?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks? She keeps muting herself. You have to say it.
You have to unmute her.
I'm trying. It's a little, there we go.
Sorry, my house is chaotic.
Okay. Uh, Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. And the first administrative item this evening is update on Seward community response to COVID-19 coronavirus. We have Roger Reamer, CEO of Memorial Healthcare Systems, and Laura McDougall, uh, Executive Director of Four Corners Health Department here to, to address the council.
Now, I'm going to unmute Laura, make sure I can. Hold on a second. There's a lot of parameters on right. There we go. And Roger and Mallory, can you also hear us currently? All right. Roger, do you want to go ahead and, or Laura, do you want to start? I don't know who wants to go first on this one.
Let's have Forrest first from the public health side. That'd be great.
Okay.
I can, I can give a first and update, and I think Roger might be able to fill you in on a lot of the other background pieces here. I know we had some questions kind of sent to us before, um, before the meeting, so wanted to just explain a little bit about, um, what kind of testing we've been doing, case counts, quarantines, that kind of thing. Within the, the, so this all started back in January and, but we've really been doing a lot of work with, uh, testing and quarantining, uh, as of probably just this last month. Or May, from the beginning of March, excuse me. Um, right now, we have three positives in the Four Corners District. One of the positives is in Seward County. Uh, so you do have your first positive as of Saturday night. We have a total of, um, in the Four Corners area, we've done a total of 111 total tests. And I can look it up yet, uh, too, to see. Roger might have a better idea how many, um, tests they've done from the Memorial Healthcare System side. Um, one of the things that we run into is that we're noticing there's a lot of tests being done outside of the district. Not only just, uh, people seem to doctor across county lines and jurisdictions and everything. So right now, we have doctors, medical providers putting people in quarantine, um, telling them to go home and isolate and then quarantining their families as well. And it doesn't always, those numbers don't always come to us at Four Corners. Sometimes there are doctors in, uh, Lincoln, sometimes in, you know, outside of county. And, and the same might happen too with some of the people that are seen at Memorial Healthcare Systems, might not actually live in Seward County. So it's, it's pretty hard to really judge and come up with a number. How many people are this presumptive positive? Because we have the shortage of tests, we see that the, um, that we've had to have medical providers go ahead and just clinically diagnose these cases and without a test. So we have that going on as well. Um, the, right now with public health though, we try to test those people that are the highest priority. And I'm sorry, my little dog is making noise here. I think that happened to Greg earlier today in one of our meetings, but, um, we have a limited number of tests, so we're trying to prioritize and use those tests on the people that we really need to know for sure if they're positive. So that would be like medical providers. Um, we, we can't afford for our long-term care facilities to have people in there with COVID. We have to figure out who they are and, and get that, that, um, that situation remedied very quickly. And get circle with quarantine and different things. As terms of quarantines, in our whole district, up to this point for all four counties, we've had 244 people in quarantine and monitored them. Um, and in Seward County, as up to this point, we've had, of that, 79 total of that 244 people were in Seward County. And we've done three contact investigations. Of course, one of those is in Seward County. So I don't, I think that's probably my main, update, and I can answer questions too. I'll give Roger a chance to talk.
Laura, a, a quick one before we jump to Roger that came up on our Unified Command meeting, uh, by Mayor Kelly from Milford in Unified Command Discussion. Is this discussion of what information Four Corners can provide us by law? And one of the specific things is identifying, we can get county level numbers, but we really can't go deeper than that. We can't identify the positive person that tested in Seward County as where they live. Or the 77 or so people who are on quarantine, we can't say 50 of them are in the city of Seward and five are in Milford. It is only down to the county level, and that's as far as it will go from the Health Department. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Um, we do have more latitude with HIPAA, um, that we can, for the purpose of controlling the spread of communicable diseases, we can talk across certain lines, but we can only share information when there's, uh, the, the threat of a spread of a communicable disease, which is now. But that means that we can work often between medical providers and perhaps like a, a setting where someone has been exposed. And we do go in and do that with schools and businesses and things when it's necessary. But we're not really, we're not allowed to share information in public releases of information more than the county level at this point.
Okay. Any questions so far for Laura? And you might even have to raise your hand if I have you on mute just so I see you. Any questions for Laura so far? Okay, we'll, we'll circle back. Roger, Mallory, you want to take over?
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I will, um, kind of pick up, uh, where Laura, um, left off. But first, I want to commend the Four Corners Health Department. I've been on this board since the beginning. You know how you get on a board sometimes and you think, oh, I'm doing civic, um, duty? We're doing civic duty now. Laura and I are in contact a lot, a lot of work being done in this arena. Uh, but her and her team are working seven days a week. There's no doubt about it. And we would talk on Friday night, Saturday night, email on Sunday. Um, it's a busy time for the department and, um, we're trying to work very closely with the department so we can take a little bit of heat off of them, uh, with our easy visits and virtual visits and try to not have everybody calling just the Four Corners Health Department. Anything they can do to work with our local providers first, that just takes a load off the Four Corners Health Department. I do want to spend a little more time on testing because that seems to be the biggest question out there. And it is by far the most frustrating thing for, for your physicians and other providers and, and just everybody in general. You know, each week that changes a little bit. We're able to do a little bit more testing. I know we see some comments out there in the community that we can't do these tests. Well, really, nobody can do these tests, um, other than the really big systems, but we can take the tests, okay? We have kits. We can swab the patients and send those, those tests into what's called a reference lab and get those turned around fairly quickly. Uh, there's currently a protocol around that and prioritization, who gets the testing. And so people just need to be patient with us. Um, we've, um, been able to open it up to outpatient a little bit. Just a week ago, it was only inpatients that we could send tests in on. And now we can open it up to some of the outpatients out there as well. Uh, but again, you have to have the symptoms and the outpatients are, um, I'll cut, I'll address those real quick. Residents and staff at nursing homes, group homes, homeless shelters and other residential facilities, healthcare workers that are experiencing the symptoms, public safety workers and fire respondents, responders, individuals five years or older, and anyone with underlying conditions where COVID-19 infection could result in increased morbidity or mortality. And then it's up to the physician's judgment as well. Again, it's all based on the fact that there's not enough kits in this nation and, uh, ability to do these tests on everybody, let alone everybody that has the symptoms. Uh, so there is some prioritizing going on. And we're asking for people's patience there. And I know for, for physicians, it's very frustrating when they can't just go forward and test, uh, somebody that they think may, um, be heading down the path of COVID-19. That's what we refer to when we talk about, um, you know, um, presumptive positive. Uh, so the folks that aren't in that priority list, uh, they are being asked to go home and, and be quarantined and stay in contact with their physician. And also the Four Corners Health Department gets involved in that as well, uh, taking their temperatures and so forth throughout that quarantine. So I know, um, I know that's frustrating, um, but that's the best we can do. That's the best that's going on across the entire state. When we do the test, um, we're actually swabbing, uh, the patient and sending it to our reference lab. We're getting that about two to three days now. Uh, there was a time when that was closer to five or six days. I could ask to go to a commercial lab, uh, which is sometimes what you see like, uh, Brian Drive Up. Uh, they're currently doing the drive up. They're sending those to a commercial lab. They're taking seven to eight days. And that's very frustrating to them. When they take the test at Brian, they're getting it done in two or three days, so they're sending it to the same lab that we are. Uh, Brian does not have the lab capability inside their own facility at this time. They're trying to get it in-house, but it's hard for them to do that. Nebraska's not considered a hotspot. So only hotspots are getting these test kits, uh, on a regular basis. Uh, we do have test kits here, so we are able to test people and get those tests sent off. Um, but it's still limited, and we've got to be very careful with that. Um, again, that's why the protocol and the, um, priority is in place. So, you know, we, well, we continue to update our protocol on that every week. Every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we meet with the Department of Health and Human Services and learn about what we can do more with testing. And we take their lead, um, when we can, when we can do more. Uh, here at the hospital, we're set up, we're, we are currently in our emergency, um, disaster plan, meaning we're, we had our incident command, um, team meeting regularly. We have an infection planning team, um, which is meeting every Monday, Wednesday, Friday as well off of those calls and setting our protocols and so forth in place. Our facility is set up for this kind of stuff. And we have an infection disease, I call it infection disease zone. Um, it's a portion of the hospital that's actually set up with its own nurses station and own rooms, uh, that can be separated from the rest of the, um, inpatients. So a lot of work has been put into planning for a surge. That's what everybody's worried about is the surge. And that surge being on inpatients, people that are getting, um, sick enough to have to be in an inpatient setting. Uh, we have a relationship with Brian Health and other hospitals in, in the area. It's called the Southeast Nebraska, um, Care Coalition. And that's an agreement that we have with all the hospitals for something specifically for like this. When we have an emergency like this, where we can share beds, we can share staff, we can share medical staff. That includes Brian and Sanes and, uh, share ventilators or whatever the case may be. Every day at two o'clock, we get a report from Brian Health that shows in our region, those hospitals, how many open beds there are. And we'll get that every day through this whole, this whole process. So that we know what we, beds we've got available, what beds they've got available. Um, we may take some of their patients. They may be taking all of our open patients. I don't know. That's the phases that we're in right now. So, um, very prepared on that side. On the clinic side, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of work in the area of, uh, some curb site. So if a patient's coming with a, coming into the clinic setting or even the ER setting, uh, with the symptoms, you are going to be treated and tested, uh, outside the facility. Uh, we'll be putting a tent up, um, tomorrow evening next to the clinic that'll have two rooms to it. Basically external, uh, exam rooms, um, so we can, we can handle that. Hospital side, hospital side, uh, if you come into the emergency room, we'll screen you if you have the upper respiratory items and, and you're heading down the path of maybe to be tested for COVID. We will, we will test you in our, um, decontamination room, which is located right at the entrance of the emergency room, separate from the rest of the hospital. Let's see, what else can I cover for you? Um, PPE, you know, trying to manage that. You hear a lot about that with shortages and so forth. Uh, we have an inventory process that we study on a regular basis. Weekly, we get a full-blown report, but every other day, we're taking a look at that, how much use do we have in place? Masks, uh, you hear a lot about N95 masks. We're doing quite well with our N95 masks. Uh, we have a way to, uh, can, uh, decontaminate those by using ultraviolet light, um, which will be another way to help us preserve those N95s with our microbiology equipment in the, in the laboratory. Surgical masks, gowns, um, and gloves. Those are the biggest things that we got to keep an eye on. We, we can't run low on those. We're screening at the hospital and we're screening at the clinic, so nobody's coming into the facility without being screened. Uh, if they have these symptoms, um, uh, we will see them outside the facility. If they absolutely need care, we will mask and, and have them get that care, um, that is needed. Let's see, what else can I say? We just implemented a no visitor policy. So right now, no visitors are allowed in, in the facilities. You'll see locked doors at, um, Milford and Utica with the doorbell, um, so they can come and let you in or screen you at the door. At the hospital and the clinic here in Seward, uh, we have screeners set up, um, and then the place is locked down when the screeners are not there. The no visitors, uh, there are exceptions to that. Um, somebody, um, in a state of, um, either in crisis or in a state of dying or something of that nature. Also, uh, like a new mom, uh, having a support person there, uh, those type of things. An individual that can't manage themselves, will have to have somebody with them, of course, um, so we can manage all those. So that's what we've got in place, and, uh, we feel pretty confident with how we're sitting with our disaster plan. It's constant change in regards to how we're going to manage people on a daily basis. We start to see more cases, which we're going to see more cases because there's going to be more testing. And, um, you know, we're hoping that most of those cases, we self-quarantine and manage themselves without too much trouble.
Okay. Questions for Laura or Roger?
If I could, if I could, I know there was a question earlier that was kind of presented that you had sent my way. Let me touch on that a little bit. This, um, this presumptive positives and then asking people to be quarantined. To get a feel for, uh, this last week, uh, we've been measuring that out of our clinic. And as Laura said earlier, there are people that are seeing physicians or providers outside of our area that are getting quarantined too, so we wouldn't have those numbers. But, um, for us, we're doing about three or four a day of people that, um, the doctors are needing to ask to be isolated and self-quarantine. And those would be the presumptive positives. Um, but there's more than that, as Laura had alluded to, because of the fact that not everybody doctors in, in Seward, uh, or Milford or Utica. But also in reverse of that, we are also doing, um, some, um, presumptive positives on people that are from outside of the Seward County that are, that seek care from providers in Seward County. So I wanted to answer that question. In and tied to their physicians, um, we have virtual visits that they can hold with them, um, telephone visits they can hold with them. And that's how we're trying to manage that away from the facility. Thanks for letting me get that in.
Yes. Uh, and Roger, we'll just follow up on that. So on the presumptive positives, um, this is somebody that other, they may have gone through a battery of other tests, whether that was flu tests or cold spectrum or something like that as well. And then without utilizing a COVID-19, or, or we could say wasting one because it's not a high priority person that you listed earlier, then the doctor's making a presumptive diagnosis and then quarantining them, correct?
That is correct. That's the approach. We've, we've, we've left the flu season basically. So we're moving away from that, that protocol of doing a flu, um, test right away because we're kind of moving into a time where if you have flu-like symptoms, you're, you're probably more heading towards being a COVID patient than you are being a flu patient. But that's what made it so tricky early on is we're still heavily into the flu season. So that was the first protocol, get a flu test, um, done because we could do that 15 minutes in-house right here. And so we could know right away, and then that would, um, rule you out for, for COVID. Uh, but now we're heading down the path of more dealing with allergies. Um, allergies don't have the same comparison as probably the flu does with COVID. Uh, so it's a little bit easier to kind of pick up, and I think you'll see more presumptions. Because you're right, that's what it is. They've, um, they've met all the criteria. They're presumed to have COVID because they got all the symptoms. They've got the temperature, those things that the docs feel this is, this is what that is. And, and then we'll monitor them from home. And if, you know, things get worse, then we'll ask them to come in and we'll do more, more things and try to, try to deal with them. Again, Four Corners will be involved in that as well.
And maybe Laura, we can speak to that then too. So now we have somebody that has a presumptive positive. They are going to be handed over to you potentially for further discussions, maybe? Is that correct? And then, and I'll, I'll try to unmute you here. Sometimes like.
That's good. And, and I would like to add, and, and I haven't told Roger this, but, um, actually last, late last week, we had another incident where we almost, a facility was almost shut down because there was an outbreak of something that looked like COVID, and it ended up being influenza A. So we, we still, um, are catching some of these influenza As that look a lot like COVID. But yes, what we do is when, um, you know, we tried, we pick up people from all over our district who are just sick and they're, they call in and say, where can I get a test? And, um, we'll, we'll find out what's going on. But sometimes the medical providers will refer them to us as well. And so what we do is we, those presumptive positives, we, we isolate them and we quarantine everyone and their family for 14 days.
Yeah, that was, that was the point I wanted to catch. We've talked about that a lot in the Unified Command Team, is that now on the presumptive positives, we're making sure that we contact them and ensure that their family intimate or immediate family that they live with and stuff is quarantining as well. So that's.
Across the district or across Seward County, you may have, if you're involved in business in Seward County, you may have some of your employees that aren't sick and they call in and say, hey, I've been put in quarantine. And, you know, we're getting a lot of people who are, who are being put in quarantine. And sometimes, um, if you have a combination of sick people and quarantine people, it can be hard to staff different operations and businesses in, in the county. So.
We're also seeing, we have in Seward County, we're still having some travel-related quarantines as well. So, I know I saw a bunch of hands shoot up, so I'm going to go with, with Councilmember Beck, I believe, had one.
Thanks. Roger, um, for the people who come in with something besides symptoms of COVID-19, sprain angle or whatever it is, what's the process for them to get into the clinic? Do they actually see a provider or do they try and do virtual or what?
That's a really good question. That's part of the screening process. If they are not experiencing the symptoms of, um, COVID-19, they'll come in and get their regular treatment. Now, we do ask people to call first if they're, if they do have the symptoms, you know, that's what we're really trying to manage. So currently in the clinics, we have a split schedule. The first half of the day is focused on, um, I guess we call it well patients. Patients that need to have those appointments, they need to have their lab drawn, they need to have their, their chronic issues that they need to see their physician for. And then we take a break and, and clean the space and then open it up for the afternoon will be what we call sick patients, walk-ins or people that are calling in saying, I need to get in. We're, we're, we're not feeling good. We do need to see somebody. That's how we're doing that. So anybody that needs care, um, you know, they, they can't wait. They're going to get to see somebody in the clinic. Obviously in the ER, they're always available to see somebody, no matter what their condition is. But we do ask that they call before, uh, if they're, uh, dealing with upper respiratory so that we can kind of coach them into what the best avenue for them to take.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt, I saw your hand go up.
Uh, Laura, Roger, whoever can answer this. Uh, Laura, you were the one who actually mentioned that there's been 244 quarantine. Is, is that 244 today? Or there's been 244, but 120 of them have already been released from quarantine because they've gone for 14 days without any symptoms?
So the total across since the beginning of March has been 244. I would say, and we had, um, I think we have about at least probably 40 new, new quarantines. And I, I can't tell you exactly how many went off, but we, we probably have around 100 right now in quarantine.
Let me get back to testing a little bit. I don't think I referenced a number of tests for Seward County. I think Laura had mentioned that a little earlier. The last I looked on the DHHS website that tracks this, it showed 35 individuals have been tested in Seward County. Not all of those were tested by us, um, by MHCS. I would just take a guess that we've probably done about 20 maybe, uh, just a little over 20. And so what we're saying there is one out of 35 has come back, um, positive. So that just gives you an idea of how many tests are, have been done. And that number jumped from, from like 18 to 35 in about a week. So you can see the testing is opening up a little bit, and we kind of expect to see that even open up a little bit more.
And, and as a reminder, that, those are tests that they met those qualifications that Roger talked about before. These are not the people that have been presumed positive. That those people are being, by their medical professionals are referring them on to just go directly into quarantine, self-isolation, uh, because they don't meet the criteria that Roger listed before. And so, and again, those people are not being included, and I see Laura shaking her head, but those people are not being included, um, in the numbers that you see posted on the statewide websites and things like that. Anybody presumptive positive, there's no number tracked specifically. Correct, Laura?
That's right. That's right.
Other council members, try to stick a hand up or go ahead and talk if I got you unmuted, if you have a question. Um, and for the members of the public, we have just a few, but if there's somebody, a member of the public that'd like to ask a question or something, just shoot me a, a message on the chat, uh, to me or everyone, and then I can recognize you, unmute you, and you can ask a question if you have. That's okay, Mayor.
Ella, did you have something else?
Uh, just a question and for whoever could answer it. Are we expecting a surge or a, an uptick or what's our trajectory in this in Seward County and the surrounding counties?
We're definitely expecting that we'll have an uptick. We're seeing quite an uptick right now in the Grand Island area, just to our west, and we've also seen an increase of cases in Lincoln into our east. So, um, I think the thing that we're particularly concerned about at this point, we've seen, just a, that we've, we've been getting healthcare professionals and residents of long-term care facilities impacted by this. And that's a population we definitely don't want to see this coronavirus in. But yes, we're seeing more and more cases, and I expect that we will see more and more cases. If, if everyone does a really good job staying socially distanced and, you know, follows all the guidelines, you know, maybe it won't be as bad as, um, I mean, it definitely won't be as bad. So we're hoping everybody just plays their part in this.
If I could add to that, I know our, our weekly, um, meetings with Governor Ricketts, um, they're, they're using the University of Washington model as kind of a reference. And that's, that's calling for, uh, the week of April 27th will be the surge week in Nebraska, uh, with April 24th being one of the busiest days in regards to, uh, illness associated with, with the virus. So, you know, a lot of our efforts are gearing for that kind of peak time. Again, as Laura said though, if we can do a good job with social distancing and, and just, um, making that work, we hopefully can spread that out a little bit and, and not get such a big, big hit at the same time. But that's kind of a model that I know the governor's referenced, and we're kind of gearing ourselves up here. For everybody to know that the next couple of weeks will probably be, uh, we'll see things ramping up a little bit.
Laura, we have a question. Emily kind of typed it out there, but it's to everybody. So if you can take a look at Emily's question in the chat, um, we've had a lot of com, I'll just read it because I don't know that it'll make it on the record otherwise. Had a lot of comments and stories, people, this is Emily from the Seward County Independent, by the way. Comments on stories, not necessarily who the COVID positive cases are, but where they've been. Initially, the state had. but where they've been. Initially, the state had shared where those people had been, but based based on what they discovered in contacted investigations. I.e. the man was at 27th Street Walmart on April 1st between 4:00 and 5:00. Will Seward County or Four Corners release any of that type of information?
And the answer is yes, we we would, we will. Unless we have so many cases that we just can't, that we have no capacity to do that if we if we're if they're all over the place. But for right now, with the three cases that we've had, they've really been fairly straightforward cases. The people have only been at work. And two of the three have only worked outside of our district. And, you know, so there hasn't been any of these visits to different places. And we followed up on all the contacts they've had and we don't have any other, well, so far, we don't have any other people becoming ill. We have some people in quarantine, but.
Laura, as a follow-up to that then too, again, then the presumptive positives that we may or may not know about, those investigations to some extent are not taking place. And we would not be sharing information because we're not tracking that. So if somebody's a presumptive positive, we didn't find out if they were playing at a park or if they were at the local Walmart or grocery store or wherever else. That's not going on, but there may be other people in the community that may have been presumed positive and out in the public before diagnosis, correct?
Well, correct. And and you know, if it is someone who is been at, we do like to know with our presumptive positives, if they get as far as as reaching us in public health, we do always ask, where do you work? Have you been at work? And that'll also sometimes help us make a decision whether or not we test them. If they say, yeah, I've been at work and I work at at the clinic or I work or I'm a fireman or I'm a police officer or my wife's a police officer. You know, we'll, that would possibly, we do ask those questions when we talk to people who are presumptive positives. So we may be looking at, you know, a workplace situation where we're quarantining some people at work too.
Councilmember Hendricks?
So you're saying our surge could possibly hit around the 24th-ish or whatever. Do we go 30 days, 60 days, 90 days from there to where we do stricter, you know, quarantine for the whole community and then after that we can kind of open back up? Or how do you determine that?
Well, I'm going to be really honest with you. A lot of the decisions are made about the the directed health measures have been made in the governor's office with DHHS. It was our understanding the trigger for the directed health measure that went into place for our area was on, it was done because we ended up being between two hotspots that had community spread and they they, especially with the connection of I-80, they thought, you know, we better put it in place. So it was kind, it was a surprise to me when that happened. We do know that this is going to be more of a marathon and not a just a sprint. So we could be looking at more months yet of of some kind of directed health measure. I mean, I certainly it'll be at least a while. And then then hopefully we can start backing off of some of the the more stringent health measures. And things will gradually open back up.
Other questions, Carl?
Yeah, so Laura, on that, you mentioned for a while. Do we have any idea what a while is?
Well, I think we certainly have to hit our peak first. And then we have to see the numbers come back down. The governor today was talking about, you know, we're hoping that that by August, we'll we'll be able to lessen some of these restrictions. So, you know, I I I like to use the phrase, I, it's hard to look in the crystal ball because it's, you know, we're trying to predict something and I feel like we're trying to predict the weather. It's hard. The the experts are saying that we could be really, it could be a pretty difficult time in May yet. So, and we'll see.
I think in the healthcare systems, what we're trying to do is focus on that surge being in that last week of April, first week of May. What that means to us, though, that means something a little bit different than to the whole community. That means we're that we're going to be at our peak of caring for sick people. People that are probably in the hospital sick, and that's just what we're seeing now. And I think what Laura's talking about is once we get past that peak and then you start to see those numbers fall off. You know, we're predicting here, you know, we're geared up for the next 60 to 90 days from a supply standpoint and everything else. So we're definitely thinking, you know, April's going to be busy, May's going to be busy. You know, our best hopes are at the end of May, we're we're coming out of this thing from the standpoint of our such our lockdowns and that kind of stuff, and then we can start going a little, get, try to get back to a little bit more normal. But Laura said it's, nobody really knows. I mean, we're studying you know, South Korea, some other countries, trying to see how they're doing and seeing if that'll work here. So again, the social distancing is key and if we can just keep doing it, it'll definitely help.
We, I did receive another question real quick, and so it continues with this discussion. Those directed health measures coming down from the state, the governors and DHHS and Laura or Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, he's relying on experts across the state. So in the UNMC system, our hospital systems, he's relying on information he's getting from them, both epidemiologists and actual onsite workers, and then also receiving federal information coming down from the federal level. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's how I understand it in in our weekly meetings. That's the way the governor presents to us where he's getting all his information. But yeah, he's relying a lot on the state epidemiologist. He's relying on his own public health director, the med center, and then of course, the governors are all meeting with Vice President Pence every week as well, sharing with them at the federal level what our priorities are. Whatever that is for our communities or for our healthcare systems, what are our priorities? So that the feds can hopefully direct the right priority needs in the right direction to the states.
Yeah, and they're really relying on, they're really relying on the local public health to get the to do all of the footwork around the epidemiology and the local level. So we are and and helping implement what what is going on and working with local partners to make sure that things are being followed. So, but we have a, we have a call with the governor every week now too, and we talk about what we're seeing and what our barriers are and things. So he he really does have a good picture almost of every situation locally as well.
Councilman Schmidt?
And you know, my curiosity just comes in the fact, you know, if we hit this surge and you're taking on all these additional patients, at what point are they actually considered clear to be back around people? I mean, what what does it take? Is it temperature? I mean, at what point are they no longer going to be spreading this?
I can take this one, Roger. So the the guidelines from the CDC that the state's following right now is that, and this is usually what we're following at least more so with the the people who are not hospitalized. But and and but it's also goes for the people who are hospitalized. It's seven, you, it has to be at least, they're released seven days, no sooner than seven days after onset. They have to be, and they have to be free of fever for three days. And their symptoms have to be less lessened and much improved.
So it's it's three things. It's, and you have to meet all three criteria. So it's a 72 hours without a fever, right? And then your symptoms lessened and
Seven days.
Seven days since onset of symptoms.
And and I think when it's, you know, I I would guess if it's a hospitalized patient and it's a really complex case, there might be another test at the end of that, especially as tests become more available.
So if if you have a confirmed case, my understanding is that they're not, there's not enough tests to do it at this time. But it would, if they are more available, is that correct?
Well, right now too, the, so if someone's been inpatient with COVID, there is a if they need to go to another facility like a long-term care facility or another facility, they they often cannot be placed in that next facility without a negative test.
But they could go home.
Yeah.
Other questions for Laura or Roger?
Yeah, I do. Greg?
Councilmember Singleton?
Laura, this is a question and I can, this is more towards the emergency response teams. Are you working with Gary Peterson and, you know, as far as one of the biggest questions is, is there going to be any assistance to get us the gear we're going to need? If we're going to have to go clear till August, let's say, we ain't going to have enough PPE to get through this.
That's everyone's worry. Yep, and so right now, the state of Nebraska is the governor's actually, well, they've passed this this bit, the legislation in order to buy, purchase PPE. There's millions of dollars that they've allocated into the governor's fund to purchase PPE. And they're trying to use the state of Nebraska as, because it has more purchasing power than all the individual agencies trying to order. So they have the state of Nebraska now trying to source PPE. The the orders for personal protective equipment are going through, they're being placed and going through instead of through emergency management. They're having them go through the local public health departments. We forward the order on to the state health department and they either accept or deny those orders, approve or deny the orders. And then it comes back to us and we try to, we get shipments of things and try to fill the orders with what the shipments coming.
Laura, are you saying, Laura, we should be getting hold of you if we're needing something?
Yes, there's actually order forms. So if you email me, I can get you some, I'll I'll connect you with my staff member Jenna and she can get you order forms.
Okay.
And my understanding was, Laura, that Jenna was reaching out to the large emergency personnel, so police departments, large EMS. So she may have reached out to Seward Volunteer Fire already. Is that correct?
Yes, she should have, there's, I think, almost every fire department placed orders already.
And I know that Seward Police Department did as well.
Yeah, so as soon as, whenever we start getting the the supplies, we'll start filling those orders that have been approved.
Laura, when are you expecting to get some of these supplies in? If you got a day count or a month count, weeks?
We're, we're hoping to get in a supply of masks. Or at least it'll be in Nebraska by the end of the week. We're supposed to be getting some other odds and ends, but not a great amount of things here yet this week. So, but but a lot of this stuff, it's coming, we'll get like three boxes of gowns. And you know, when looking at the 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 huge orders that have been made with us, that it doesn't, I mean, doesn't even like a drop of water in a well.
Yeah, because, you know, our biggest issue is going to be, we got, I think we got enough masks to get us through because Gary did come through it on that. The biggest issue is going to be the gowns.
Yeah, I think we had, we received a total of three boxes of gowns and they're about 24 in a box. Which doesn't scratch the surface yet.
Any other questions for Laura or Roger? Seeing none. Laura and Roger, if you want to just stick on, there might be a question related to our next item. We're going to discuss an ordinance real quick. Well, not real quick, we don't, I don't know about that, but if you can hang on just for one more item and then we will go from there.
Okay, our second item then is an ordinance adopting directed health measures to help prevent, limit or slow the spread of the no, the novel, novel coronavirus COVID-19 among the citizens of the city of Seward. Greg, did you want to start this?
Yes, um, this was an ordinance that was drafted in unison with Kelly Hofschneider, our city attorney. As you may well know, Douglas County and Lancaster County and their associated predominant municipalities, Lincoln and Omaha, they have their own internal health departments and so they passed their own health directives or mandates which included the closure of essentially any facility where you can't maintain a six-foot distance and social distance between employees and customers or employees. These predominantly are salons, nail salons, massage parlors, tattoo parlors and similarly situated occupations. And so those took place a few weeks ago as they continue to move through that. And it was brought up at a number of Unified Command meetings after that, that Laura at Four Corners and others were getting calls, city was getting calls in regards to asking if we had, especially when the health mandate came into effect a little over a week ago, Friday, if we were still open or we had any restrictions because they would like to come out to our community. And we were hearing this across the the Four Corners region and then also a bunch of municipalities in southeast Nebraska were hearing this, all the way down to Nebraska City, Beatrice, Fremont. And so that took place. We started to get questions from local business owners. A lot of them began to voluntarily close down due to a number of issues, just recognition that they were putting maybe their employees or themselves in harm's way. With situations with people, they may not know where they have been, again, social distancing, inability to maintain six feet apart. Once we got through that, we continued to see that that was a problem. There was confusion with the state issued health mandate. Many consultations with Laura about this issue. Inquired about whether Four Corners Health may issue a mandate in regards to it. Due to the regulatory apparatus between the state, the county and the cities, Laura and Four Corners Health didn't feel that if they did give any sort of mandate in regards to those occupations and businesses, that they would be effective without additional work done by the city or an MOU signed with Four Corners Health. And that would happen in every certain single municipality across the Four Corners region. So village, second-class city, first-class city, whatever it may be, there's additional legwork that need to be done to even have that be effective at the Four Corners level. And so the right, the recommendation by Four Corners was kind of, if this is a problem, you will probably have to deal with it directly yourselves. And I see Laura's kind of shaking her head. So that's kind of how we got to this point. We continued to hear from other communities in our region asking what we were doing. And so at the direction of the mayor, he asked us to draft this ordinance. And Kelly and I worked on that together, made sure that it met muster for state law. It has the proper citations in there. And then wanted to bring it to you tonight, essentially the ordinance you have in front of you mirrors exactly the language in regards to gatherings that is implemented right now in Lincoln Lancaster County.
And Greg, if I could add something, you know, part of the reason for this is consistency. We're trying to prevent a sort of Swiss cheese approach to to these restrictions. And given that, you know, Seward, as maybe you know, is in the metropolitan statistical area with Lincoln and Lancaster County, part of that designation is is deals with how the workforce. is, is deals with how the workforce moves back and forth. And so because of, of that nature, we are in a unique situation similar to other communities around Lancaster County, but even more so given that relationship. And so that, that's the real, you know, the, the primary reason is that if Lancaster County, or specifically Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department has, has something that goes beyond what the governor's office has, has already mandated, then we need to probably take a serious look at that, especially as we move forward, because there could be additional restrictions in the future. But at this point, their, their focus was on specific professions and businesses where you have physical contact between the customer and their, the client, or you just simply can't keep the customers, the clients, I'm sorry, the, the clients, the employees and the employees in a relative distance from other employees to, to be able to keep a safe distance based on that six-foot recommendation. So that's kind of where, how we got where we are. Roger or Laura, did you have anything you'd like to add to that based on what you're hearing and seeing?
You can go Laura with that. I don't really have anything more to add to it. I mean, I think it's a good approach in that, you know, we try to follow lead of our tertiary facilities as well. And, you know, we have staff that come from, from Lincoln and work here. So they're experiencing that, that different model. And we have staff that do some part-time work in, in Lincoln as well. So I think it's a good, good idea.
And we've had a lot of salon owners choose to close anyway. And even the ones who've been closing at times are asking, you know, they would like to have some directive so that they can apply for some of the SBA loans and things. And without having that directive in place, they cannot, and Greg, you can probably speak to that more as well.
Yeah.
A lot that would like, actually like to have that directive in place.
And I think the mayor and I both got a number of contacts from local businesses here in Seward just today. And I think Linda might even be on. If she is, she's nodding her head. So Linda, you want to kind of comment on that specific issue that you talked to and called us about with today? I'll unmute you here.
Okay.
If you can go ahead and identify yourself and then just give your address.
I'm Linda Maltin. I'm owner of The Cutting Corner at 600 Seward Street downtown.
And go ahead Linda, just talk about, I, I know that you voluntarily closed, that's correct?
Yes. We voluntarily closed almost a week and a half ago, only because we had a couple of customers after giving our service indicated that they had been out of state within one or two days, California, Colorado, some of the hotspots. So we had a lot of concern for our customers that were in the salon at that time. My biggest concern is you can't give a service without being within that six-foot distance. I mean, you have to, if we're in a, we're a salon in a barber shop, you can't keep that six-foot distance apart. You can keep it under 10, but the six feet is really hard. And I'm very concerned for myself, my family, my customers, but not only that, the community. Because what I'm seeing is those that have volunteered to close, that customers of ours and outside of the community now are calling just a few that are still open. So we not only have to deal with customers that we've had, but customers from outside of our community now calling and asking to have that done in Seward. And that's a real big concern of mine because we don't know where they've been, who they've been around and what they've been exposed to. So.
Linda, the last thing that we talked about, and Laura mentioned it, was you've worked with and tried to apply for some of these benefits.
Yes.
And kind of explain what, what's happened with that?
Well, my account, we went through three or four different ones. The PPP loan, the Small Business Association loan. And we're finding because there is not a mandate for closure, that he said it's going to be harder and harder for you to qualify. And I've been working for a solid week on this and just got another phone call today. So to be able to have something available to us as small business owners, government-wise, the programs that are out there, I just feel like we have to have some type of mandate to close, have it, that it is closed, that we can't, I'm sorry. I'm having some trouble here.
We can still hear you.
Okay. Um, I forgot where I was at because it was kind of making a bunch of noises. I just feel that there has to be some type of mandate for the community as far as salons go. And it has to be clearly mandated. You know, people have said there's a gray area. I, I have to disagree with that. I think you can't give a service if you're not six feet apart. You just can't, you know, you just can't give that service. So.
Greg, if I could update you as well. I, after getting these contacts today with the concerns, I did speak with the governor's office and I, I hope to have a direct phone call with the chief of staff, hopefully tomorrow, just to bring this to their attention so that they're aware. Cause I think Greg, you mentioned also, you're hearing these issues across the state and other municipalities are getting calls from frustrated business owners who are trying to access some of these benefits and, and, and they're unable to do so. And so we did, I did make the, the governor's office aware of that concern today. And so hopefully as we get more information, we will share that with, with the community and specifically these business owners.
At this point, Mayor, do we want to turn it over to the council for questions?
Sure.
And then Orwell? Or do we want to go ahead and move the, introduce the ordinance and, and start moving through that and then get to a discussion?
Let's do the, let's do the questions first. And I think Kelly wanted to say something.
Can you just briefly speak to the operative dates?
That's what I was going to ask.
And then, and then just logistically here, procedurally, I'm recommending a three-step process here tonight. The first one would be suspension of the statutory rule. The second one would be moving to adopt the ordinance. And then the third and final motion would be approval of the emergency declaration, which is on page two, section six of the ordinance. So just a simple motion approving of the emergency declaration, which basically what, what that does is requires immediate operation upon publication of the ordinance in pamphlet format. So.
Okay. Thank you.
And to speak to the dates, in publishing in pamphlet format, that essentially means tomorrow it would take effect.
Right. But when would it, when would it end?
It will end on, I believe we drafted it for May 6th. The current, this was a confusion point. Me and Laura had a, a long discussion about this. The current health directive as signed on April 4th, I believe, the most recent one that went statewide, still has the original dates as they came in for when all the health mandates roll off. So Lincoln Lancaster County, Douglas County rolls off first at the end of April. I think Sarpy County goes shortly thereafter. And then we're the next grouping on May 6th. And then a lot of people think the whole state, it's just statewide everywhere, May 11th or May 12th, but it's not. If you actually read the mandate signed by the chief health officer for the state, which is the official mandate, ours goes to May 6th. So the ordinance at this time goes to May 6th to match the language of the health measure from the state.
It could be extended though, if.
Right.
I would anticipate you'll have an opportunity to extend this ordinance at a later council meeting if necessary. Looks like May 4th would be, or May 5th would be the first Tuesday in May. So.
I was just, my, my concern was you could, I've read that, I've heard both ways that it's, we were stuck with the original May 6th, or we then adopted that May 12th. But I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter if we are meeting May 5th, we can always extend it if we need to. So, okay. That was my question.
Yep.
So Josh, do you need a motion to suspend the statutory rule? Is that what we're looking for, Kelly?
Well, that will be included in this process. The only additional step is going to be a motion specifically for the.
Introduce the ordinance.
So introduction of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Suspension of the three reading rule, adopt the ordinance, and then finally a motion to approve the emergency declaration.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Okay. Got it.
So are there other questions from the council?
I got a question for Jonathan, since he's on. Jonathan, with that CARES Act, do you have any insight to if this will help them qualify for loans? Or is this just a shot in the direction and we might hit, we might not?
Yeah. So we're just discussing that right now. What our interpretation of it, based on feedback we've gotten, and I will add to my coworker Zane who's on the call as well. It actually has to do more with how your income is affected, not necessarily where, what, whether an area is designated with health directive measures. That's the feedback we've gotten from Small Business Administration, as well as feedback about the CARES Act. And Zane, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yeah, exactly right. We have seen a wide variety of businesses that haven't necessarily been shut down, so to speak, have applied for either the PPP or idle loan programs or the SBA. It's, when it, when it, what it comes down to is purely is COVID affecting cash flow. And the SBA is going to look at that. And that's why they ask for a lot of, you know, previous year's documents. They're going to look at that and they're going to be able to identify that there is a cash flow issue going on there and employers aren't going to be able to pay their employees. So that, I don't, I'm not sure if mandate is, I guess, the right path to go because I don't think it will matter so much as the cash flow does. So just something to consider.
Well, and that, that goes along with what I had thought, because I didn't think it had anything to do with ordinances or any dictation. It's just more of the financial impact of flow. But thanks for confirming.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I would need someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce that.
Alyssa's got one.
Okay. Introduced by Schmidt, I believe.
Okay.
Alyssa's got questions, it looks like.
Alyssa, do you have a question first?
Hold on.
But I was, so Chris got it. I'll second it.
Okay. All right. So Chris has introduced the ordinance. An ordinance to adopt directed health measures to help prevent, limit, or slow the spread of the novel coronavirus COVID-19 among the citizens of the city of Seward to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has by, has been read by title and designated as ordinance number 2020-11. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So moved.
Motion by.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Hendricks. Is that correct?
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
All right. I'll read the roll.
Go ahead.
Any other discussion? Sorry, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Seeing none. Beck?
Yes.
Camprit?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Again, this is ordinance number 2020-11. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second by Singleton.
I, I actually heard Coulterman first.
I didn't say a word.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, who was, was that Beck?
I said it.
I'm going to give it, I'm going to give it to Beck. So moved by Beck, seconded by Singleton.
Okay. Unless there's any further discussion?
I have a question on the fine.
Yes.
How are those going to work out?
Define that for me.
Let's hope we don't have any fines, right?
The, the fine section follows our penalty section on every ordinance throughout our code book. So how it would work out is, you know, the police department would issue a citation just like any other ordinance in our code book.
If I could add to that, I know this has come up in, in questions to Governor Ricketts before about how this is, some of these issues would be enforced. And I think the, the consensus has been that, you know, not to be heavy-handed, it's to first remind people, ask them to voluntarily comply, try to educate them on the issue. And hopefully they will, they will comply and it won't be an issue. I, I don't really anticipate getting to the point where a fine would be necessary, but it needs to be available in case it, for some reason, the situation would escalate to that point.
Yeah. The Attorney General has provided guidance too on, on prosecution. And I think our police department has this memorandum from our Attorney General on, on those recommendations. And yes, there's several steps before there would be actually a citation issued.
And really it's just about cooperation. We're just hoping people will cooperate and won't, won't rise to that level. So any other questions? If not, then the question is, should ordinance number 2020-11 be finally passed and adopted? Greg, do you want to do the roll call?
Yes. Beck?
Yes.
Camprit?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks? Miller?
Yeah.
Schmidt?
Yes. Kelly had asked for a motion to approve the emergency declaration.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Wilkin.
Go ahead, Greg.
Beck?
Yes.
Camprit?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
All right.
We will, Mayor, do you want to let them know how we're going to roll that out tomorrow to make sure that we get it out in the public?
Um, yeah. So I, I, I assume that the Seward paper will have something on this. I'll, I'll have a video out this evening, just similar to the video I did before, letting people know and kind of explaining it a little bit so that people aren't necessarily caught off guard. I think based on the conversations we've already had with, with business owners, I don't think it will come as a surprise to many and it probably really will impact a lot of them because many have voluntarily ceased operation. But I think it's important that we have a consistent policy within our community, a consistent policy with that of, of Lincoln Lancaster County. And I believe other communities are passing similar directed health measures this week as well, as this is kind of going beyond just Lancaster County, as we try to address this as more as a region. Is that, is that fair? Okay. The next item then we have is item number three. This is a claim of Kevin Stepp, 1038 Main Street, Seward for personal property damage. Greg?
Yep. I'm just going to let them know, we have Laura and Roger and Mallory on the line. We have nothing else left for you guys, I believe, tonight. So we'll let you guys, we, I know you guys have been very busy. So we'll let you get on with your evenings and we sincerely appreciate you guys being with us this evening.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping tabs on this.
All right. This is a claim and it's included in your packet, essentially a relatively odd claim because it didn't list specific damages in regards to like a, a cash amount of damages. Near Cottonwood Street, we had a water main break that the water department ultimately fixed. This is just to the east, I believe, of kind of that detention cell that's technically owned by Roger Lindner at the time that it was taking place, but on the southern side of Cottonwood, before you get to the Redwood Estates. Mr. Stepp owns a property over there, which the water main runs through an easement adjacent there too, kind of also in the Cottonwood right-of-way. And we went over and fixed it, returned the soil. It went through close It went through close to a driveway, a rock gravel driveway, I believe. And I believe he just wasn't very happy with how we ultimately repaired it. But we went out, we seeded it, we continued to add dirt to it as best we would normally do. He was just unhappy with that, ultimately filed this claim. Didn't specify any specific amounts or anything. And so at this time, our recommendation would be to just forward it on to the city attorney and, and insurance provider and go from there. And I can answer any questions you have, and if you need, wave your hand if you're not unmuted. So I think I have all the council members open right now.
And, and we can forward that on without any sort of dollar amount to an insurance company?
They may look into it more and, and see how it's defined. Again, I, I think it's going to be grass and gravel and some things like that. But we've, uh, from talking to Tim Richdig, he's like, we've done what we would normally do in any situation and probably went above and beyond and returned to the site multiple times. So at this point, I think Mr. Step is just still unhappy and this is the way that he's expressing that. And so we can forward it on to Kelly and to the insurance provider and see where it goes from there.
Moved, forwarded on to the insurance company.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by, somebody waved their hand. Say it again.
Second.
Oh, no, I saw Beck wave her hand, I'm going to go with that one. She must have done on the first one. So moved by Schmidt, second by Beck to forward the claim, uh, Mr. Step to the city attorney and our insurance provider for further disposition. Any other discussion? Mayor, may I read the roll?
Go ahead.
Beck?
Yes.
Camprith?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks? Miller?
Yeah.
Schmidt?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, next item number four. This is the ordinance, the third reading of the ordinance, annexing Walmart subdivision north addition lots two and three to the city of Seward, third and final reading. Unless there's any questions, I'll go ahead and do the third reading. An ordinance declaring the annexation of certain contiguous and adjacent tracts of land, urban and suburban in character, more specifically lots two and three Walmart subdivision north addition to the city of Seward, to the corporate limits of the city of Seward, Nebraska, and extending the limits thereof accordingly to ascribe the real estate to be annexed and its boundaries to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. As I mentioned, this is the third reading. So this is ordinance number 2020-7. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Do we have to introduce that first, Josh?
I don't, what's that?
Does it?
I will introduce.
It was introduced at the first reading.
Oh, yeah.
Was it?
Yeah. And we don't have to do the statutory waiver because we've done it three times.
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Moved by Schmidt, second by.
Sid.
Oh, Camprith.
Yep. Is there any, unless there's any further discussion, seeing none?
Beck.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Hendricks. Miller.
Yeah.
Schmidt.
Yes.
I believe this is our last ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion to make the two ordinances a part of the permanent record.
So moved.
Second by Singleton.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Singleton.
Go ahead and Greg, call the roll.
Yes, Beck.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, uh, item number five, agreement for professional engineering with George Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for preparation of plans and specifications, obtain permits and easements and provide bid phase services for waste wastewater treatment plant, outfall design. Greg?
Yes, uh, one of the first phases of our update to the wastewater treatment plant. And part of our study that was completed was to change the outfall position of the current wastewater treatment plant. And then that outfall will be utilized in the updated system down the line as well. The reason to change the outfall, it currently, the outfall goes out of the wastewater treatment plant into Plum Creek, uh, which is a smaller tributary. The larger the tributary, um, the more variable you can be in your discharge rate, which puts less strain on your system so that you can continue to have more hydraulic capacity and a bunch of other issues that engineers can define. We may even have an engineer online, uh, tonight that can discuss this with us. So at this point, I'll turn it over to, uh, J, well, one thing, I will note that we did go out for quotes on this because of the threshold level of it, and we did receive quote backs from SEH Olson and JEO, I believe. And so SEH was the low quote that we received. From there, I'll turn it over to Jake to discuss this a little more, then we can take questions. Let's see, Jake, are you unmuted? Nope. Hold on. Doesn't even give me an option to unmute Jake. Uh-oh Jake.
He's not appearing muted.
He's not, it doesn't give me any option. Are you? Well, he's fixing it, you can see it kind of adjusting there. There we, hold on, I got you. Go ahead Jake.
All right, um, so basically, kind of like Greg said, this is kind of the, the first step in improving the city's ability to take on more wastewater. With ensuing larger plant expansion, um, project, uh, coming down the line. So basically this is somewhat of a low hanging fruit project, um, that the city can complete. Estimated construction costs, uh, that Olson put together initially was somewhere around $400,000 for construction. I think that's probably a little high, I think we'll end up lower than that. But essentially it's a good first step to continue to move in the direction of handling more wastewater for relatively small amounts of cost to the city.
And again Jake, this will, as we work towards a final plan for the full wastewater treatment facility, this will also buy us some time by increasing us some capacity elements due to the outfall. The new outfall location will be the Big Blue River, uh, far larger tributary. But this will give us some more time to have more capacity, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
It could, can someone just walk me through the process here when we say we're, we're creating more capacity without actually putting another treatment facility in place?
Sure, um, basically the, the state limits how much wastewater you can put in a certain body of water. Basically, think of a concentration. They don't want the concentration of what we're putting into that body of water to get too high. So you'd make that body of water, a larger body of water, which is what we're doing. We're going from the Plum Creek, which flows slower than the Big Blue River. So by increasing the amount of water that we're putting our wastewater into, uh, we can thereby increase the concentration.
And to further, we have state limits that we're required to hit parts per million across the spectrum of different measurements and, um, items. And so the other element is just for the public to understand is that we're not like taking raw sewage and just dumping it at a certain rate into the tributaries. This is water that we've treated. This is, uh, water that has met a very specific standard to come out of our facility. That is, uh, quite, quite clean, actually. It, it's treated to a very high standard. But again, just as Jake said, you're just trying to hit a parts per million threshold across a number of different measures and different things that the state requires us to measure for. And so by putting in that larger body of water, you can stay under those thresholds, but have, have the volume, which increases our, also our hydraulic load in the city. We can, we can take on more.
Any other questions?
Moved tender into the agreement.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Greg, we lost your audio.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Camprith.
Go ahead Greg, call the roll.
All right, Beck.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Coulterman. Uh-oh. There we go, Coulterman.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item number six, Seward Foundation applications. And six A is specifically the Seward Memorial Library. This is a, for meeting room technology upgrade, a larger screen and built-in projector and accompanying sound system.
Because she's a trooper and sat in the library all night, I'm going to totally make you do this Becky. So Becky Baker is online, let's, let's jump over to her.
Okay, the Seward Library Foundation is looking at a number of projects around the building. And one of those that was strongly recommended by many groups who've used the room is to expand the screen size in the meeting rooms. If you've met in that room with any AV happening, you know what I'm talking about. And so option one that was presented, uh, in a bid we received was just the replacement of the screen wider version and installation of a built-in projector, which would be wonderful as far as staff is concerned. Then while they were looking, we got to talking, what about a sound system similar to what is downstairs in the large meeting room? Option two that they presented is a sound system that would be very similar to what is downstairs now, separate from the visual. So like two different systems running together. And then option three is a high-end integrated, very easy and simple to use system, but it's a lot more money. So I've just presented you with all three options. I don't know what kind of money the Library Foundation was interested in forwarding. They are meeting virtually on the 20th of April. Well, no more than, but the timing for the Seward Foundation to look at this was to talk about it now. And hopefully someday we will once again be able to use the meeting room with public attendance. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Becky? Yes, Ellen?
Becky, what's your preference out of the options?
Well, I, I would like a sound system of some sort. I'm not familiar myself with the high-end integrated system, but I like it when they say it's easy to use because we have so many outside groups use that room, as you can see from the report, uh, just over 150 last calendar year. And we're not always in the building, staff is not always in the building. That's the one room that can be used when the library is closed. So the easier we can make it for the public, more I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing, seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Are we, do we move to approve this or is it forwarding to the foundation?
I think we're making a recommendation to forward to the, to the foundation.
I will make that recommendation.
All right, we have a motion to recommend to the foundation, is there a second? Yes.
I'll second.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, are we recommending any one specific or a recommendation of what?
Ultimately, isn't it the foundation who will decide that? I mean, do we want to say, I mean, I guess, uh, Becky, what we're looking at the most, you're asking for from the Seward Foundation is 10 grand. Recommendation to Seward Foundation, up to 10 grand, or do we want to specify 10 grand?
If you're asking my opinion, I think giving them the most flexibility possible makes the most sense to me. I would hate for them to say, oh, if only you would have asked for 5,000 instead, we would have funded, but you get nothing now.
So up to 10 grand.
Up to, works great.
I'll second the motion.
There we go, we have a motion by Schmidt, second by Beck. Any other discussion? I'll read the roll, Beck.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Hendricks.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yeah.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the City Ministers' Report.
Uh, we were, I apologize for not having a physical report in your packet. We've been running around at City Hall chasing our tails, trying to, uh, move through the COVID-19 issues. I'm probably on anywhere from five to eight Zoom meetings a week right now. Whether it's a governor's meeting, Four Corners Health meeting, we have about three a week. Working with the school districts, a number of other items, uh, and that takes up quite a bit of time. And then I'm also continuing to obviously manage our department heads. And they continue to work to split crews up, especially in the essential groups, police department, fire EMS. And then especially the utility groups, the electric utility, and then water wastewater. Water wastewater is housing out of, uh, half the crew is in the wastewater treatment plant, half the crew is in the water treatment plant where the RO system is. And they don't really interact other than getting orders and information from their department head. Electric is doing the same, for the most part, one crew is able to be a little bit more mobile. And then the crew that kind of goes with Larry is headquartered mainly out of the electric department building. And so they're trying to work through the headaches of that because we just have some really large projects right now. We're working on moving utility poles down by the Second Street Bridge project. With that bridge replacement, some of the utilities needed to be moved over and it's really hard to do that with just three people. And so one's working on one bank on the river and one's working from the other side and they're trying to connect it in the middle. But with a growing city and all the projects that we have going on, uh, this continues to just provide its own headaches that we try to work through. And then I continually solicit feedback from all department heads at every Zoom meeting we have, all our department heads are on Zoom as well. And, and just ask about questions we're receiving from employees, health issues they're concerned about, anything that they're, they're having concerns about in regards to what's going on in our operations, interactions with the public and everything else. The status at City Hall seems pretty good. We are, uh, having those groups rotate for now, for the most part, Bonnie, myself and Julie are on one team. And then Rhonda and Suzanne work in the other one. Nick kind of, as you know, if you know where his office is, he's kind of hidden away from everyone and tries to do his best. But he has such paperwork intensive work that's really hard for him to telecommute. And so we continue to just conversate with him about ways that we can keep him safe. Uh, and so that he also doesn't infect everyone else and then us splitting up didn't serve a purpose. So we're trying to understand the logistics, but everybody's doing a great job of continuing to follow the guidelines, disinfect things, clean them off. And be mindful that those resources are very limited, but we want to be cognizant of how we leave a space when somebody else is going to come in and take it over the next day, uh, while the other group's working from home. Continue to work with Jake on a number of projects as he, uh, kind of helps engineer and oversight on those. And so we continue to work through Waverly Road. Some items are moving on East Seward and the big one right now is that the turn lanes down on Highway 15 by Rumery and the rail campus. That's kind of the big project that's going on right now. Seems to be going all right. And the substation should be finalized, but Schuler, the Pet Source Project has permanent, or has power. And so they have their power source and we're just doing some switching and finalizing some things to get a, a route underneath the, the rail tracks. And then that substation will be completely online, probably by the end of the month, I would guess. by the end of the month, I would guess at this point. We're about another month behind. Also because of COVID-19 issues, things in the supply chain have slowed down just slightly. A lot of those materials and stuff at the end of the process have come in a little slower than anticipated, but we continue to keep Pet Source up to date on what's going on. And then I'm in communication with HR over at Hughes Brothers and Tenneco pretty regularly, just to get a feel for what they're doing. And so we're monitoring that. And then all the other normal, normal things that are going on, just trying to figure out how to operate them in a different way. Obviously, if you were out today, grass is getting green and growing. And so the crews have been out getting ready to mow parks and cemeteries and public spaces and stuff like that. So they'll set off into the, to the, the woods and, and do those things. I can answer any other things or questions you have, COVID-19 related or otherwise, and we can go from there.
Hey Greg, I know it's probably too, too early to really tell, but I mean, are, are we looking at any projects that were planned in this fiscal year that might be getting pushed because of COVID-19?
At this point, only if there's a supply issue. If we had a shortage on rebar or something like that, most of our big projects at this point are all street related. And so as long as we can get materials, shouldn't have a huge problem. I think for us, we've kind of started directing that if anybody's got any big equipment that still hasn't been purchased, but we were trying to be on top of them last fall so that they weren't languishing around. That used to be a problem. Where people would start ordering their last minute equipment in the summer and then it wouldn't show up until the next fiscal year caused issues. And so they've been really good about ordering equipment now to, to my, that's what I want them to do, but then there's not a lot of large equipment sitting around anymore that we can kind of hold off on to watch how the revenue situation rolls in. And we just won't know on that. The administrators have all been talking across the state about that. Obviously, you're gonna see some sort of bump on sales tax, but we don't know if it's going to reduce on some of the business sides. And then you're gonna see a huge influx on the online order side and also the, you know, all the people buying groceries and other things like that. We just don't know. We have no clue. And so we'll just have to continue to monitor those as they roll in. Will we see any issues with property tax payments? That kind of comes due May for the first property tax payment. So we really won't be too deep into the understanding of what the county treasurer gives us until maybe June and what that outlook looks like. So just continuing to monitor it. I know it's definitely on Nick's radar as he goes into the budget process here in April.
Greg?
Yes, John?
What are your thoughts on the pool going forward here? You know, that's going to be something we're going to face. And then the other question would be about possibly the kids out of playground equipment. Are you thinking about closing it or are you thinking about sanitizing? What are your thoughts?
So yeah, well, let's start with the pool. I've instructed Adam Bodie, our, our assistant rec director under Bob Core, to kind of continue to talk to communities in his more national associations in the south or in areas that are warm that operate pools in general and kind of getting guidance for things like that. The outlook doesn't look good. I'll just be honest with you, until we see a, a true light at the end of the tunnel or we're really confident that we're gonna see some things open up on the recreational side. I've instructed them to essentially get the pool ready to go other than filling it. And the reason we don't want to fill it is our massive expense with the pool every year is the heating system. We have an exorbitant amount of natural gas that we pay for through Black Hill. That's the biggest cost associated with that place, other than obviously the employees as well. And so we will not be planning to bring that online until we know definitively that it's going to be able to be utilized to some extent. Because that's just a giant wasted cost. Plus you're just wasting water. I mean, just to be realistic. So any questions on the pool? Seeing none, I'll move on to park equipment. I'll talk to the mayor about this. We continue to see other communities closing down park equipment. And the discussion I've had kind of with the PD and the school district, because let's be honest, the number one playground, the entire city is actually the elementary school playground. It's the most predominantly used one anywhere. And so Josh Fields and I continue to discuss that and have the PD, the elementary school staff that is onsite at the building, neighbors, I mean, I drive by it, it's on my way home. We just continue to monitor and watch it and see if there's a lot of use. We hope people assume they understand the risk. I think they even did some posting out there at that facility with just little signs that are taped up that say, we are not sanitizing this piece of recreational equipment, so you know. If we were seeing an exorbitant amount of use, we might move to discuss that either internally or with you guys. Again, I think that's something that we can regulate. My discussions with Dr. Fields is that he would like to do that in uniformity with the city. If we go one way, he would like to go that way. If they feel strongly to go another way, they, they would let us know. We just don't want to put the community at risk, but so far we haven't seen a massive amount of 25 kids running around on equipment. I would say it's more the older kids utilizing the basketball courts, actually, is where I've actually seen the most you, use, whether it's the one over by St. Vincent de Paul or even the one at the elementary school. I've seen a lot of kids kind of hooping it up lately. So that's what's going on. We continue to monitor it. Other questions?
Greg, where are we on the Fourth of July? Maybe Jessica, you can?
Yeah, I can answer that. We were going to have a meeting this week, but then Clark remembered that it was Holy Week. So the meeting will happen next Thursday night. We talked a lot with Josh and Greg about this. I mean, really, we want to be strategic and thoughtful about the decision. We're going to take guidance from the state epidemiologist and look at the data, the facts. So they are telling us it's too soon to make any decisions. So their recommendation is to just have a conversation, talk about it, what it would look like if we modified or postponed. Or if, you know, we wanted to cancel, that would be an option, but you know, really, we can't make any major decisions until we have more data. So they're encouraging us to talk about contingencies and those things, which we will do next Thursday night during a Zoom meeting, which you are all welcome to attend.
I would recommend that not too many of you attend though, so that we don't break the open meetings act, right, Kelly?
Some of you could attend. Let's put it that way.
Kelly's nodding. So the other thing with the Fourth of July is Clark's also doing a great job communicating with other festivals across the state, whether that's Homestead Days, Czech Days, all, all the different things that go on in the summer, especially the ones that are leading up to Fourth of July that predate us and just kind of tracking them. And so with, with all the free time he has, he has plenty of time to worry over it. And then we also rope in, obviously, Allen Baldwin is, is, is definitely involved in those discussions because that's who has a lot of work to do on that date. And then also Jerry Meyer at the National Guard Museum, that's a huge time for them and a lot of the things that they do. And so he's been chiefly involved in those discussions with Clark as well.
If you have specific opinions about it, we, we'd love to hear. I think there's just a lot of, nobody really knows yet and you know, nobody wants to make a decision without good data.
Anything else for me on the administrator's report?
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Hendricks. Beck?
Yes.
Camprith?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yeah.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller? That was a yes. Oh, sorry. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right.
All right. I see Jonathan Jenks on the call. I don't, I assume there's no events coming up that we should know about?
We have a couple of very quick things. I'll just note Tuesdays in April are Takeout Tuesday. That's from the governor himself. So it'd encourage everyone, if you can go out safely tonight and other Tuesdays in April to support our local restaurants. Appreciate that. Also note tomorrow is the due date for downtown revitalization program applications. We've gotten actually really good feedback from downtown building and business owners. So looking forward to that being on your agenda for the next council meeting. The, the goal is to complete that funding so we can apply for the next round of downtown revitalization. And then also just general encouragement, if, if you have businesses, employees that have been impacted by the pandemic, please encourage them to reach out to the chamber office. We're, we're here to support those impacted.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Not hearing any. Then all we have is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Schmidt?
Second.
Seconded by Singleton.
There you go. All right. Beck?
Yes.
Camprith?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Schmidt?
Yes.
All right.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Done.